The Board, the Regular Board of Education meeting on August twenty first, two thousand and twenty five at six thirty P M in the boardroom of O P R F High School. Please call the roll.
Mr. Brisbane?
Here.
Dr. O'Dea?
Here.
Mr. Arkin?
Here.
Mr. Gertz?
Here.
Dr. Lindstrom?
Here.
Mr. Brandtros?
Here.
And Miss Williamson?
Here.
I move to enter closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment compensation, discipline and performance or to smith up a specific employee of the district or legal counsel for the district and independent contractors and specific volunteers, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal c- legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government wage increase transparency act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act. Collective and collective negotiation matters between the district and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. In litigation, when action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filled and has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative director of you know, or when a public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minute of the closed meeting. Add a sentence.
Okay.
Um, but it's called roll.
Dr. O'Dea?
Yes.
Mr. Arkin?
Yes.
Mr. Gertz?
Yes.
Mr. Brisbane?
Yes.
Mr. Brandtros?
Yes.
Dr. Lindstrom?
Yes.
And Miss Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, we are back in business. So we can be in open session and we're going to start with superintendent announcements.
Hey, so we know the school year has really just started. I have three things to share. I'm seeing more come up from that. First, big congratulations to math teacher Sheila Harding, who has received the excellence in secondary mathematics award in the Illinois Council of Teachers of Mathematics. This honor recognizes her dedication and outstanding contributions to secondary mathematics education. Congratulations. Also, congratulations to the award-winning speech club sponsor Pat Cheney and the OPRF speech team on earning charter stats in the National Speech and Design Association, NSDA. This is the highest honor awarded to high schools in the NSDA, recognizing exceptional student participation, skill building, and leadership under outstanding. So congratulations to both programs. And finally, we invite all parents and guardians to join us next Thursday, August 28th, for our annual back-to-school night. This is not intended to follow your child's schedule and meet their teachers, as well as learn about parent groups and maybe pick up some Husky spirit while on the way. The evening starts with a welcome in the auditorium at 6:15, excuse me, followed by first period at 6:30, both to see you all there. That concludes the announcements.
Thank you. Is that as well as status submitted, resolved? And public comments. We have four, read in person. One to be submitted, one to be added to the meeting minutes. I'm not for you to read earlier today. So if you're ready to start the first one.
Okay.
And just to set up for public comments, please limit comments to matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education to three minutes. And this is not intended to be a dialogue with the Board of Education. The response time for questions will be up to two weeks.
First speaker for tonight is Ms. Bean Rowan.
Thanks for having me. I'm going to read just so that I can. Okay, thanks for knowing me. I'm going to sort of read this so that I don't miss any points. So I apologize if I'm not making background. I wanted to talk about the proposed calendar for the 26, 27 school year. And I really think that having final exams after the break is going to have a significant negative impact on student well-being and academic logistics. So first, I want us all to consider mental health. Finals week is stressful, we all know that. But the current schedule allows the kids to push through, finish the exams, and then sort of enjoy a well-deserved, stress-free winter vacation. By moving into January, the final exams, we're going to be forcing students to spend their break either worrying about not studying or studying, missing some family time, which is valuable, and unable really to completely disconnect. The entire purpose of the vacation is a mental break. It would be lost. Our school already focuses on fantastic resources to help us manage stress, like we have wellness workshops and pupil service, support services. And we have mind and body class. We have the support we need to succeed, and the reward should be a restorative break. Second, the timeline does create a host of logistical problems for seniors. Timing is critical if they want to apply early, or a lot of just regular college application deadlines require final grades per semester. It also could interfere with students who are coming to the school or leaving the school from a different district, or going abroad, or coming back from abroad. So it makes that transition a little less smooth. And finally, anybody who's done any construction on their house knows that the construction timeline is a rather soft timeline. It always gets delayed so many times. But it's sort of a shaky thing to put a major change on. So to make a calendar-based change based on an unpredictable timeline, it's not really ideal. And we shouldn't be making permanent academic changes to accommodate a temporary and uncertain issue. And we can rework this. It doesn't have to be finals after a certain time, the semester ending after. We can have finals prior to winter break and have the semester finish a few days after winter break so that they can regroup and talk about what they had studied, what the final exam was about. You can have some of the non-mandatory days off pushed into second semester to adjust for some of these days. There's just a lot of creative reworking that can happen. So I wanted to just urge you to reconsider the proposal. Vacation after exams is a vital part of the academic year, and we should keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm the speaker. Ms. Vivian Behrman.
Hi there. I also wanted to talk about the proposed changing of the schedule. I echo everything and anything, but I don't want to repeat it again because I feel like that will just be a waste of time. But I'm also coming from the perspective of having two big athletes. And so this is something that I'm concerned about because they would be here based on the way that the trials are scheduled for the next year. They would be back, I think, on the 10th of August. So they would be here quite before all of the other kids are back. And so I think that that only would impact because they would have the finals and they would also be starting much earlier than everyone else. So I want to keep that in consideration as well when we're looking at that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And our last speaker for tonight, Ms. Christine Waters.
I'll just third, public comment number one and public commentary number two. And I'm going to read because I'm a good speaker. Good evening, Madam President. Board members and Superintendent Dr. Gregory Johnson. My name is Christine Marie Waters, and I come before you as an Oak Park and River Forest alumni, parent, and a neighbor who has witnessed both the successes and the challenges of District 200's special education system. I speak from lived experience, not only as an advocate for my current student, but also for any families who have similarly lived and shared experiences. Our community deserves a communication policy that is not just reactive, but equitable, inclusive, proactive, and restorative. The absence of clear, timely, and transparent communication is not a neutral act. It creates harm. Too often silence leaves parents scrambling in crisis. Too often silence leaves parents scrambling in crisis, erodes trust, and undermines the very principles District 200 upholds. I urge District 200 Board to use the resources already available and explore the possibility of new tools. To, one, implement a written and enforceable communication policy for social education families that ensures timely updates year-round. Year-round, including during the summer. Establish clear response time to parent inquiries, especially when safety, mental health, or specialized program programming is at stake. Explore more inclusive practices that protect students and families from discrimination and implicit bias inside and outside the classroom. Create more equitable and less burdensome residency verification processes, one that recognizes the realities of multigenerational households and families experiencing housing insecurity. Equity means building systems that are welcoming, user-friendly, and supportive of the whole child, the whole teen, and the whole family. It means honoring the voices of those most impacted by policy decisions and means collaborating with families, teachers, staff, neighbors, community-based organizations, and taxing bodies. So the school motto, those things that are best, and I was a varsity cheerleader, meant as a foundational value, promoting persistence, creativity, and well-being in education, relationships, and the broader community are not just words, but a lived reality. I also want to pause to acknowledge and thank those in the building who continue to show up for students every single day, especially mine. Dee Mole Scott, Dean Hopson, Ms. Glita Heinz, Ms. Beth Wangling, Ms. Lindsay Kirby, both new to the team of Waters. But I imagine I'm at most both today. I'm very excited. I know that's my three minutes, like two seconds to go, but that's all right. Give me one more second. Ms. Erica White, Ms. Lush, Ms. Raquel Moore, and of course, former trauma-informed specialist, Mr. Curtis Diggs, whose absence is deeply felt by so many Black families, mine included. I am asking the district to lean into restorative justice, to center student well-being, and to restore trust through policies and practices that dismantle, not reinforce, systems of white supremacy, racism, patriarchy, ableism, or any other barrier that keeps our students and families from thriving.
Ms. Waters, I'll have to have the item.
I do both. I just have, I have a quick closing, if that's all right. If not, I can email the board.
Okay. We'll actually go to the board.
You know, probably. You got it.
Just letting you know that we'll do some comments.
Thank you. We are going to move to consent agenda. And are there any consent agenda items that board members want to pull for discussion? Hearing none, I move to approve the consent items as follows. A, approval of open and closed minutes of July 10th and August 7th, 2025, and a declaration that the audiotapes of the closed session minutes of October 2023 be destroyed. B, approval of the personnel recommendations, including new hires, transfers, lease of absences, and resignations. C, approval of the following policies for secondary action and the lawless, hopefully prepared spells. 1.10, school district legal status. 1.20, district organization operations and cooperative agreements. 1.30, school district philosophy. 2.10, school district governance. 2.130, board superintendent relationship. 2.220-E4, exhibit open meeting minutes. 2.220-E7, exhibit access. Access to closed meeting minutes and verbatim recording. 2.220-E9, exhibit requirement for no physical presence of court and participation by audio or video during disaster declaration. 2.240, board policy development. 2.80, board member oath and conduct. 3.30, organizational structure. 4.180, pandemic preparedness, management, and recovery. 4.50, payment procedures. 4.90, student activity. 5.20E, resolution to prohibit sexual harassment. 5.270, employment at will, compensation, and assignment. 7.130, student rights and responsibilities. 7.140, search and seizure. 7.300, educational activities. 7.325, student fundraising activities. 7.40, non-public school students, including paralegal and homeschool students. 7.90, released during school hours. 8.110, public suggestions and concerns. And 8.80 gifts to the district. And that is all of them. D, approval of the National Council of Teachers of English, NZTE, to photograph and video English teacher Mr. Rex Avali during back-to-school night on August 28th. E, approval of the May and June 2025 treasuries report. F, approval of the May and June 2025 financial report. And G, to accept the tenant, the fitness center of Oak Park, to accept from the tenant, the fitness center of Oak Park, the donation of fitness equipment to the site program totaling $9,500. Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Granhuis?
Yes.
Mr. Erks?
Yes.
Dr. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Dr. O'Dea?
Yes.
Mr. Brisman?
Yes.
Mr. Arken?
Yes. I think there's a correction in G. Because there's, I think there were two donations. I think there was equipment by the tennis club, and then the $9,500 was a donation, I believe, from the Alumni Association.
Thank you.
Need a correction. So we will, we're accepting the tennis donations that are Oak Park for the fitness equipment, the site program, and the $9,500 donation from the Alumni Association.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Arken. So, Mr. Arken?
I said yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes. And now we're going to move to section I, action. And I move to approve the following action items. A, to certify the 802 graduates of the class of 2025. One second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Please call the roll. Go ahead.
It's an honor to be able to do this.
Yeah, it is.
Ready, Kate? Please call the roll. Mr. Erks?
Yes.
Mr. Brisman?
Yes.
Mr. Brisman?
Yes.
Mr. Arken?
Yes.
Dr. O'Dea?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes. Item B, approval of the proposed 26, 27 calendar as presented. One second?
Second.
Discussion or questions?
Thanks to the folks who came up for public comment. Thank you to our parents who have written us emails, very thoughtful emails, and those who have posted thoughtful comments on the parents' Facebook page. I just wanted to discuss, I'm a yes on this. I just wanted to explain why. The comments that we've gotten have been in kind of two buckets. There's been a number of comments that have been about the facility itself and the concern that the school is not going to be ready for students. And I think on that one, I think we'd be irresponsible not to listen to our faculty members and our administration who are raising valid concerns that all of our learning spaces will not be ready for, and not be ready for the start of school year. I think that it appears possible that us not to listen to that. And it does a valid concern. The second bucket of concerns is around mental wellness. And I also, that's an incredibly valid set of concerns. I would want to make sure that we're doing something that's going to heighten anxiety for our students. Changes are for all human beings, and perhaps focus of that to mitigate any heightened anxiety or any damage to mental wellness for our students. I think that we can mitigate that risk in a couple of ways. I would really hope that the administration in November, December 2026, does two things. One, that we explicitly instruct our faculty that once your break is a break, that our expectation is there won't be homework, there won't be new class projects, there won't be additional assignments, that the communication from us to our faculty and our faculty to our students is going to be, this break is a break, passes down. Rest, restore, spend time with the man. This is not a time to study for finals or to do schoolwork. So I hope that that is clearly communicated to our faculty. I think we also, that we have an obligation to communicate to our families and to our students that that is our expectation, that that break is going to be, that we expect you to rest. We expect you to have pencils down and not to study. Because when you come back, there's going to be plenty of time to prepare, and we're going to provide you with all the supports that you need, all of the refresher. We're going to prepare you, help you prepare for finals so that so I, yeah, I'm hopeful that we can, in the event, alleviate any harm to our students. I'm hurtened by the fact that we kept this schedule until 12 or 13 years ago in this district. Many of the school districts have final exams after winter break. We don't, you know, I think the families that have students in the school now don't have that institutional memory, so it seems like a major change. This used to be the way we did it in the school district until probably 13 years ago. So I'm hurtened by the fact that we managed to do it without harming our students. Then I think that doing it for one year for valid facility-based reasons seems to be the best course. So I'm a yes.
Thanks for your comments. I appreciate it, but I don't know. And I don't know, for a couple of recent years, I wanted to shout out to Benjamin Boyd, who wrote us a very clear, well-thought-out letter today, and that helped me make my decision. I think that the questions I asked a couple, two weeks ago, I didn't feel were adequately addressed. I don't think that we looked deep enough at creative, at different creative options with this situation. It only affects the, the main effect is in the athletic portion of the building. We're talking about two weeks. And so that, in terms of academically, that would be PE. There's got to be, it's in the fall, so in the weeks of August, hopefully there will be good weather, and most of our PE is going to be outside anyways. So I just don't see as much disruption as we're being told. I mean, there's, you don't have to carry anything through the building because, you know, you can basically deliver everybody to those PE doors in the alley. So I just don't think there's been created enough thought processor or generated here to say, okay, how can we do it? I do worry about this break through the holidays, through the Christmas holidays. And, you know, I, as a graduate, I understand what it's like. My daughter and I are opposites. I absolutely was pencils down during Christmas, Mary, and she was not. All right, and she stressed through the entire Christmas for four years, you know, to make sure that she was, she was on top of her subjects, that all her work was done, and that she didn't have any learning loss. But further to that, and I think the most important reason is that there's going to be a loss of two weeks of academic preparation for our kids who are going to be taking the exams. And that concerns me, and I've had some parents bring that up to me. And that concerns me the most, that they're losing out on two weeks that normally they would have had to prepare for AP exam. And now, especially since our change in curriculum, where we were seeing more and more students enroll in AP courses and exams. I just think, to me, that's probably the number one issue. So that's, that's why I'm. I'm also know this, I appreciate the points you cited. I agree largely with what you said. I think that compared to 12, 13 years ago, it's a different era. Many of us in this community are high-functioning professionals. None of us, a lot of us don't want to take a break. And, you know, and our kids are put on, are given more pressure today than they were 10 years ago. Succeed and sell. I think there are a lot of people that would not, even if they weren't struggling. Studying is the time for rest and relaxation. Just couldn't have ended. And I think that, you know, we've been doing a serious item strong confidence in this administration, with the sad public creative solution. To be entirely blunt, like, I almost prefer having counseling that I'm trying to focus and being like an acceptable course. We can come up with a solution that's I'm glad that I was here to deliver. I think that there are solutions out there, come up with something, and especially like speaking outside.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to vote yes on this, and the main reason that I'd like to lift up is a comment that was made by a member of the Faculty Senate, who was part of the Calendar Committee, who put forward this suggestion. And she said two things that were pretty persuasive for me. One of which was that the stress and anxiety argument can really cut both ways because those weeks before Christmas are also incredibly packed with musical performances, athletic events, all kinds of things that the students are doing. And having exams at the same time can be really chaotic. And so her perspective was that actually, for many students, pushing the exams to half of the break is a better solution because they get to do it. I'm recounting what was shared by a member of the Faculty Senate with many years of teaching experience, which was, which was quite moving to me. And the other, the other reason, I think, this is an acceptable one-year solution. Just to clarify again, this is construction-related. And in the discussion last week, we did confirm with the administration that any permanent change to the calendar would be, you know, there would be a longer deliberative process. So I know there are some concerns that this had been raised in the past, and maybe this was a way to sort of rush through a permanent change, but we've been assured that's not what this is. So I think because of the reassurance from the representative of the Faculty Senate, I feel comfortable supporting a one-year change.
As long as we're all going to comment again and just process again like we did two weeks ago. As somebody with a graduate class of 2018, class of 2021, class of 2025, the last time this came up, I felt strongly that we should conclude the first semester and their finals in December. This go-around, I'm willing to vote yes because of some of the reasons already articulated. And also for me, the fact that the finals aren't coming right after the weekend break. There's two The fact that the finals aren't coming right after the winter break. There's two and a half weeks of catch up time, re-acclimation. Quarterfinals are going to occur. But I'm a little less concerned about AP prep only because a lot of the AP classes, they're spending the whole of the entire semester anyway. In preparation mode for the test. And lastly. This is a one time deal because for a lot of, I share a lot of the reasons and concerns that. Many members have said about the value of having. The tests prior to winter break when you have a special circumstance. I accept that the the arguments of the faculty as well, so I'm I'm a yes.
Yeah, I I've been, I've been struggling with this one. I've been vacillating, you know, I also. First off, I think the the timing on this is really unfortunate. You know, I understand the optics look a little miserable. Considering this came up last year and there's a a strong voice of opposition against this. I mean, that's not lost on any of us. So I I I do rue those, the timing of of all this and circumstances, but I do also, I I do echo. You know, what Kathleen expressed, I do feel like they, there was a compelling case made to the board. Why this would be, how how this could work. You know, I guess I. I've yet to hear any of of the suggestions made about reshuffling some of the, or having any sort of. Latitude with some of the the extra days and looking at, I had, I don't think that's a part of our discussion yet. I guess I am a little curious about that. I also. I guess would like to hear a little bit more just because I thought it was a very, also like Fred had mentioned, a very well written. Letter to us this morning by sophomore, Mr. Mr. Boyd. I'm just curious about those early weeks, he expressed that the the facilities, our tradition did not. Seem to express that they were not used. As often those first couple of weeks. So just this, maybe more clarification on those those two principles.
Yeah, sure. You know what? I assume that was directed at me.
Yes, 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 thanks.
Good. So could I ask, let's call Parker to come up here. I know there was some clarifying information she wanted to share, but in the interim. I'll I'll simply point out that part of the consideration that we have is not just, you know, availability of the. Fieldhouse. That's true. That's a, that's a true point and Fred made a point, which is also, you know, weather permitting, it's pretty easy. During those earlier weeks anyway, for folks to be outside during the PE, you know, half of the first few days, but there. Getting a lot of organizational stuff, largely in the fieldhouse. And so I I think that makes good sense. It's a matter of what it takes to make the transition. Between the current setup we have in various places for physical education. And where things would need to be for physical education with the new building, right? It's not just a matter of pop open the door and walk through and go. We have physical education and we kind of craft different orders going on right now. And transition isn't just, you know, a matter of walking through a door and getting there. So it's just, it's it's a matter of making sure that. When the building is ready to be opened, we're ready to go and we are. Able to provide the type of curriculum with what we need for these these classes, the way we, the way we need to to start the school year. So. That's the more accurate kind of explanation for the category of concern is there. And I also think that speaking to some of the things that we've heard, I think, Linda, could you speak to two things? I wanted you to speak to a little bit of clarification on the difference in dates. That we be looking at between what otherwise the calendar may have been, right, as opposed versus what we're talking about here. Are you following me on that? And the other, could you, I I know you have worked a lot and talked with AP teachers as well, so if you could amplify that just for a moment, I'd have a question.
Sure. In terms of the number of days we're speaking of, the traditional calendar would have come with a start date for students as of the eighteenth. Of August, because the thirteenth and the fourteenth would have been teacher staff development and institute days. So with the start date of the eighteenth, the proposed date on the calendar is the twenty fifth, we're talking about a five day difference. Of the start of school from what the calendar would have been in its traditional setting. The difference you're seeing though is in January, which is when you see the additional days after we come back from the break. Which, as we have said before, balances out the semesters. If you take those days away and end before winter break. You will then cut short semester classes by thirteen days. Included in those semester classes are three semester long AP courses. So a class like AP Government in the first semester would be thirteen days shorter. Than it is in the second semester and they're being prepared for the same exam. And that doesn't happen until May, so they're retaining their information all the way from first semester till when they take the test in May. So that's the difference that you're seeing. Without those days, you're not balanced in terms of the time with the curriculum. The second thing that was mentioned, I did take a survey and went to speak to AP teachers of six different courses. Because you heard from the government teacher who was here last time. And so I had a chance to go around to the AP Calculus, another government, Free Calculus, Euro History, Music Theory, and US History. All of whom expressed. That the children would be ready for the exams that they would be taking, that they know how to shift in terms of what they would have to prepare for. Which would be AP exams on May third through the fourteenth, that would be the dates of it. And then seniors would be in school for an additional two and a half weeks. In which case they would continue with more curriculum with them to have them prepared to leave. So. Class which usually ends at AP exams, they would continue with them to make sure that they had additional content for the time. They were not concerned that they would be lacking in preparation for that exam. And as you stated before, as a teacher was here and said, they have been prepared before we started later, they will be prepared again for those AP exams.
Adult AP exams don't take place before the end of the semester anyway, so. Thirteen days shorter in first semester, right, in second semester, they're taking those exams a couple of weeks before the end of that semester anyways as well. So is it thirteen days net when I consider the fact that the AP exam comes before the end of the semester as well?
They usually end the week before we are giving senior finals. So they would end the Friday, then following week typically three more days and then senior finals. So senior finals would be two and a half weeks later instead of directly after in that next week. And when I say senior finals, that's the rest of the school seniors who are not at AP exams. Typically, students who are in AP have taken their AP school finals before that term, before the exams.
Right, but so to the, and maybe I just didn't understand, so to the, to the point of the fact that. Second semester is already at a comparable advantage to first semester in the sense of duration of the class. Prepare for that AP exam, right? But is, when you said that that thirteen day reference, is that including the fact that that, is that just looking at the semester duration? Or is that looking at the duration from beginning of the course to the AP exam itself?
Semester duration, so.
So it's not a full thirteen because they're taking the AP exam not like a week before the end of the the semester.
The thirteen days only refer to first semester only because second semester is always going to be historically longer. But we would have to add those days back because you must have one hundred and seventy six days to a school year.
Exactly, yeah, that's a good point.
It would be added on second semester.
The 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 unimbalance effect there is kids who take the AP class first semester. They're taking, they're they're still taking their exam second semester, so there's no way that, so that thirteen is just set down. Does that make sense? So there's no, they they would lose those thirteen days first semester, period.
Their class ends.
And there's no calculation going into second semester that affects that loss. Does that make sense?
And we have three AP classes that that would affect, that are just semester long.
By far away, not mature.
Correct. And I would just add one other thing, a nuance to the PE conundrum. As with English, PE is the only other subject in the school that every student is required to take every year that they are here. So all of our students take PE. Which means we are trying to accommodate space and acclimation to the new space for all of our students and not just. Half or fourth.
Thank you, Principal Parker, for your attention. And I'm, well, at from from my end, I appreciate what all my peers have said around table in the discussion. And a lot, and I'm going to vote yes, a lot of what I've heard supports. I also trust. That I don't know how to run a high school. And I don't probably know what it takes to get thirty three hundred students to what they need to be and how they need to be there. And a way does you vision, does it cause other kind of disruption or impact curriculum? So I do trust the. Team and the administration and the teachers who have said that this is what they need to do. In order to make sure that school will start consistently and efficiently throughout the throughout the year. So Ms. Evans, if you please, just officially call the roll. I'm going to listen.
Yes.
I'm going down, yes. Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Rissman.
Yes.
And Mr. Williams.
Yes. Thank you. And you also have, we also have, just for informational purposes, the Fourth Board of Fair, Fairness Reports. Employee, you know, employee demographics recruitment retention, kind of overview for twenty five as well as fly through trends. We are next going to move into the governance section of 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 the agenda. And we had the opportunity on Tuesday to work at what IA SP to talk about. Our governors will also spend some time in open session talking about our goals. And so wanted to take some time to really look at goals and I shared some information this afternoon, forget the lateness of it. To really say, here's what I captured around the areas that we spoke about and goals that we like to consider for. Next year as well, or current year rather, as well as who might, you know, take the lead on those goals from the various departments. And so I want to start by opening it up and just saying, looking at three categories, we're around communication, facilities and finance. And then also school environment slash academic achievement. This to confirm that we're aligned on those categories and that we're also good with putting some, putting the school environment and the academic achievement together. So again, starting with the goal categories and then those I captured around the discussion that we had on Tuesday. So take a moment to look at that.
I I only, it's not necessarily, I don't think any of us are. I know that the director, I've seen six or seven couples, I need some.
Thank you, that was a lot. You haven't discussed them yet.
Yeah, I I appreciate that. I mean, it's it's a tough call because I'm. So that is my next one, so. So I'm, I. You know, I'm.
One thought, it probably falls under the facilities and finance, but I think we forgot to to that show.
Adjust your preference?
Emily?
Can we just review again the rationale for consolidating academic achievement and school environment in the one category? Those feel very different to me.
Yeah, I know, I had that, I know, so I wanted us to discuss it because it came up as perhaps we can, you know, we can put them together, but I did hear academic achievement come up. It's not really important, okay, so if there's not anything in particular we think we should do for school environment, then perhaps this makes sense, just focus on academic achievement. For the category for the this year's goals.
Well, I think that we, we watch for a hundred percent, we don't, we don't.
This, a a couple of questions or observations. When it comes to school environment, I know that the prior few years, you know, safety and security was always a big issue. And we had a great presentation and we've seen a great plan and I think we're all signing off on it. But I still think it needs to be somewhere in our, in our goals. I think that. You know, I think we've had a great director within this position that we struggled with for many years. And I think we've got a solid person in that position now and I don't think it's something that we should take a focus, you know, take our focus off of. So I I really think that we ought to have a, you know, a bullet point of of safety. And security because there are issues. I I mean, I'm just looking at things online, the blow ID checking every day. Logging, whatever they're swiping ID. Is is a big concern in the community, you know that. And just other things, the door, outdoors that come off the washrooms. So, and I know many other schools have, you know, have that as well. So, you know, I think maybe that's that. Issue solved. What I'm just is. I think those are things we can continue to talk about in terms of of maybe fine tuning our. Our safety and security. I just don't think it's, we should say, hey, got this great plan, hired a great director and saw the data.
And furthermore, I would say we can add some monitoring goal, but in terms of selecting what we use for safe and insecurity, I don't see that as role reward. That is for recommendations.
No, I didn't even talk about that. I would, I would put it, I don't know how to verbalize it. I haven't given it a thought and I'm not really good at verbalizing those things anyway. But I would, I do, I do understand it would be a a monitoring.
Yeah, 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 and I know we made the distinction last time about some goals that would make sense for us, we're for the motivation, keep our, keep our, fill the gaps of speak and make sure that we're monitoring. Well, personally, I completely agree with that. I just want to make sure we stay on what we do versus what we expect already out of school.
And the the other thing, the bullet point on. You know, the academic achievement in the freshman curriculum. Should be, are we going to focus strictly on the freshman curriculum or should it be expanded to curriculum in general or? should be big, are we going to focus strictly on the freshman curriculum or should it be expanded to curriculum in general or uh, you know, curriculum paths or whatever it might be, uh but just not limited to only the freshman curriculum.
Well, I so um tonight we're talking, we're developing after the last uh last uh sorry. Sorry, just.
Just thought you wanted.
Um so uh uh yeah, I believe that. Um but there there seem to be, um, you know, the the freshman curriculum is on here because we're coming up on on your point where we were collecting some more long-term data, starting to get, um, you know, a better feel for what's, you know, roots perspective, uh more robust perspective. That um if we're going to look at including math, for instance, others, we should use a similar sort of criteria, you know, about a time-based criteria when when something's implemented. I think, um, you know, I have some sort of base level um right here for how many years we may wanna let that play out. We've always started with data. And I think, I think that that's the the reasoning, that's my take on why freshman curriculum is is on this system. Because I I we.
I I understand that the um any change that we'll be looking at is a foundational, however, this is the change in the freshman curriculum, but that that what I'm saying is the the effect of that is, we're we're also monitoring is also, you see here. Okay, um based on that freshman change. Okay, so it's, you know, um.
Yeah, no, we can, and that that is a little point fair enough to refine because I'm thinking like a freshman curriculum, the thinking of Boris Jana said about the first cohort, first class, the person. You know, group of students that finished all four years will be this class twenty twenty six. So thinking across the years, but I, yeah, we can get, make sure we're clear about that. It doesn't mean just the first year, but kind of what the overall impact and effect of that is across across the years. Yes.
I think you're both right. And I think that um my expectation of reporting for the freshman curriculum, I should have, it's part of the story is also we have the 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 path toward these classes. It's important, yeah, but it's, it's part of the freshman curriculum story, but it's more broad than that. So, yeah.
Any of the others who are right academic achievement and school environment, anything else you're missing, what things want to do? And it's always the goals, um, to make sure that we um don't have a tendency to have far more goals than we actually achieve. So I want to make sure we keep these tight around the streets that we get or that almost have an impact this school year.
Yeah, I, yeah, maybe for school environment, for, you know, for students' safety while being.
Yeah.
Uh I think that's.
Yeah. It was taken as care as well, so you know, that's better.
Anything else?
Isn't everyone's big with their proposed, um, board members take the lead on this, what the next steps would be for to attract that members to establish, actually write out what those exact goals would be, is this gonna broaden, write write smart goals and write out what that looks like um for um our next meeting?
So we're, and just so I understand, we come up with a proposal, write a protocol, specific objectives.
Well, we'll bring that back to our next meeting. Um Johnson, the reception, we'll all, we'll all come prepared. So you and I will connect it, there are communications that we come back and share that. With the whole event as a board, we agree.
A top to end, I guess, including the.
Exactly. And we also posted, you know, what value that we want to make sure we can get them finalized. We have been, maybe you can get them done pretty early as possible.
And I have one question regarding the three of us and facilities and finance and other than that, but at least four of them. I mean, we're, we're gonna be getting together prior to this for me, I have, you know. So this.
Don't 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 look hard for you together. You do it in pairs.
It's a preparation. We take.
Take turns.
Well, yeah, we, well, we're gonna do it.
We need one. Thank you very much. Great. So we'll plan on um at our next meeting that we will come back with, um, with every kind of group having some proposed goals for us to discuss with a overall board to to align on. And then a few other recommendations that we talked about on Tuesday. One was um being able to be tough about board engagement and presence to be available to our community. Um that would back to school like coming up next Thursday is a really good opportunity um to have a table, have presence to be available um to talk to community members and why they volunteers and some of us have kids in the school, so we'll be taking our ways through the um, you know, the various classrooms, but for those who might be available, we'll do so, it's gonna be the volunteers.
I I I'd be, well, I'm just curious, it wouldn't be an issue if to be able to, like, if we're all there, having to be there, I think.
Well, we think of a couple of people, right? So maybe we share so like, you know, shares two.
Okay, so so it's like people that are there with their kids, right? You're not getting on a table, right? So you're.
Right. So I think like, I know Kathleen and I have children, so we, so I'm not going to follow you without that, yeah.
Usually what we've done in the past is uh, maybe two board members at the table one time early, you know, and you get released. Okay, yeah, that'd be everybody.
Are you getting Fred? Are you gonna, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I maybe I'll be back here. Okay, thanks, John.
I think at least you just send out a like a, I don't know what you call it, like a little travel business, you just fill in the time, so.
Yeah.
Do you have any, can they exactly that everyone used to be in the table for the year long, but I'm very lucky with time? And I just need to know who's on the two, so then I can sit on the screen.
And I have Brad and Josh, and John, because maybe he did it.
I I can do as well, but I think you were thinking about having a rotating cast.
Right. And the whole, you do the whole time, yeah.
Um, yeah, we want a physical presence of one or two board members. It's not a problem as long as we're not discussing the board.
So you can't, something like this is not usually, I don't think it's necessarily a problem.
Well, if you're at a table, if you're at a table with somebody, it's like, so we'll talk to you guys. I would say you're all there at the same, that would, that would be issue. Yeah, we just want to process this fitness, but who's understanding? Um like, I mean, I mean, I mean, I'm all.
And they have your next story, like. The only question I get is, are we gonna have anything to hand out to parents? Um.
Well, we don't need to, yeah.
I have, it's just a, an idea. We can give them our board and I have this, have the hours on.
Maybe if the table where Bart got has some kind of signage that says media board, you know, reach your small board. We want to, so we're just not, a couple of tandem dudes standing around, but.
I'm gonna take care of.
Did you order a dumpling? Already taken care of.
Just, so we have to think of the first question about what we can anything out, because I've heard, you know, useful links or things that's where you're, she, we don't know where to go to find information or.
Okay, maybe you can use a, a little jam pepper, right?
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, people know kind of like how to access the information, like is there, like maybe she that has some links or something to say, you know, kind of here the policies, here's, you know, how you see board materials, is there something? Would would that be useful, like something that?
Go find things like.
Yes, it's kind of my pager about where to find information because I know oftentimes people aren't quite sure where where they can find information. So maybe that could be.
Right, how to engage.
Okay. Uh, y'all, something I've had is looking to you on Monday, you, you would see what's on there, would you?
Lisa. Um, the other piece, this is just more of a, you know, sort of work for us, you know, going forward. We also talked about um our board protocols. Um and that we have a lot of good things in place, um but, you know, taking our board atlas and just looking at what the IA ASB has and looking at our, we hear that we're in sync, that there's anything that that's missing. I think we're pretty close, um but just want to make sure we're looking at that and put that and and updating that. And then another conversation that came up was really for these regular board meetings, moving the governance section to be higher on the agenda to be earlier um on on the agenda, um just so we can spend, you know, just more, you know, more time, more focus on it. Because uh if you get regular board meetings, you're more likely to get people working on things than you're paying attention. But I think putting it earlier and having our discussions be more upfront. Um and not at the end of the meeting, just kind of on the community communications and transparent piece, that'd be helpful. So that's also a proposal for um what we do.
Um, yeah, so Jessica, maybe go to these four days of each night, this is just such a mission.
Open the governance piece, yeah, yeah, okay. And then we can get to our discussion um and be, or whatever we have to share, you know, updates, the atlas that we want to talk through, but just again, I'm doing that because if our meetings go on, our attendance has to go down. So if they do, we never do that earlier, would be. And that's what, that's what I had from Tuesday for um anyone else anything we're missing or that we didn't cover, I think.
One one thing I have is that just that we had some little um discussion towards the end about just how we evaluate and how we do our conduct ourselves evaluation.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Um and that we are um going to continue to look at how we can improve that process and make it more um robust. And and not that it's uniform, it is, has used clearly currently, but it we think we all agree to.
Well, I think because we are using a format, you know, that has kind of, you know, kind of, it was important relative to communications and you know, and you know, engagement and collaboration, all those are important, but specifically around our board goals, right? And so as we get these goals in place and we can just talk about governance section, you know, being able to have those conversations about where we are and how things are going and being discussed, but also on a formal evaluation. So that's interesting, yeah, at at year end, looking at what we'll do to uh make sure we're looking more deeply at our at our our board goals as well as the the general information is supported out.
I have another question about, going back to goals. Uh last year, I believe you and Graham developed a template that helps us um articulate smart goals. We're expecting, the expectation this year is to use that same template.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, definitely want to make sure that we are having a proper smart goal definition. Um and then just quickly around what it is. Yeah, so smart goals, the specific measure of, you know, um, so we can actually roll that down. Anything else on governance? Um and now we're going to move to um our district, um, community and state reports. And I'll be first up at IGOV. I did not have an opportunity, we met on Saturday, did not get an opportunity to send out the notes um to the um to the team, but um we have a number of new representatives on IGOV as new elected officials of our our retaining office. Um and there are a few things that we are focusing on. Uh one, we started last year, but we put some more um energy around it is this concept of um if you, you know, so you want to run for office. So how do we help individuals who may be interested um in pursuing an elected office to know what's involved? Um what it takes to get, you know, to actually turn your petitions, you know, just the whole process. Um and being able to understand what elected officials do, um and also looking at how do we have a central repository um that could be helpful for all the elected bodies of OPR. Uh so having conversations about a couple of different options, um where we might be able to house that information um from a IGOV perspective. Um, so community finance, may CFC, can they think?
We did that last week, and I just had a chance to put together the report that I normally help board, so I'll get that done in the next few days.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Um, Collier, climate behavior?
Uh CCB is going to meet on September tenth, this first meeting, and it's only meeting of first semester, and that's going to be a conversation led by INPUS. Um the next couple of days, we're going to be sending out invitations to community members, parents, students, faculty and staff to um simply reason that they want to be part of CCB for this year, and that's type of session.
Um, Apple? Stateability committee, have we, sorry, those yet, I'm not guessing, so all in school here?
Yeah.
No. Um, facilities?
Uh, I haven't seen really a report. We haven't had a meeting since the last time.
And have there been any other meetings that was on the list or still in progress?
I had a question for Lisa. Um I I haven't seen any community council messages yet. Um I was added to the list at the end of last year, but I don't know if I'm still on the list.
Uh, yeah, the uh communication from that group is not kind of some members that I'm aware of. Uh it was last week I met with this year's three years. Um and the first, they're, the meetings are going to be the same, same times last year, six thirty PM, third Thursday uh of the month in the uh third floor library. And um other than that, more information for it.
We're gonna have some days because there's conflict.
No, it wasn't there because of power meetings, like I generally get there with this. So uh it'll come out, you um, you you, okay. Can you remind me what the names I assigned to?
I will have to pull, I'll pull up that, that's great, which I should have done, Graham, but I'll follow up with you.
Are you boosted also?
I don't.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll follow everyone, you know, we said that, no, it is, I know we did a big work, but I'm sure that we have, that we all make that out there.
That's a part of applause. Um I just didn't manage to.
Yeah, I know they, they did start sitting out, yeah. Yeah, because we thought that a lot of them are starting, for example, with the whole part of government since September, so.
A lot of the communities are starting September.
Yeah, yeah, and that's my.
I can, I can add that, um, you know, we, um, the early childhood collaborative, um, working on our busy meeting again. Um having our second meeting in September, hoping to continue to to discuss um reworking of the uh the the existing contract and roles responsibilities of over at the start of agencies.
All right. Further reports. Um and lastly, are there any future agenda items that they want to raise?
Sorry, I have a question. If if we're, if a group of community members wanted to form what is the process for that? How do we arrive at, right, the committees, the assignments that we have today?
Now, I would need help on how we arrive at the committees, being the.
Right, the listening in the brain.
Yeah, yeah, my understanding is that the committees have been either uh government bodies that are meeting together or parent groups or like district committees, those have been the three categories that we've been, that we've been assigned to. But beyond that, there aren't, you know, like we are not working or anything like that. We're the ones that are connected to the school or to the governing bodies. Interesting, but, correct, others to play something I'm missing.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add to that.
Yeah, like, parent association, like less, less board members, like, just like, well, they give the best support presence and then we kind of decide whether or not that's appropriate.
I would think so, that seems reasonable.
Um and like, there's a, there's a mixture of different types of committees we're talking about here. Some are board committees, some are superintendent's committees, some are really neither, they're a various version of a booster club. Uh, you know, um for a different person's schools. So there's, others are, yeah, like you said, just straight city governments, so I think um there's no one answer to how these get formed and how they're on their. there's no one answer to how these get formed and how they're on their list, they're just some of the ones important, there's a ten. So I think if there's another one that the board is interested in being at the ears on to somewhere or another, there would be nothing inherently wrong with Lisa's opinion.
Thank you, I just, yeah.
Yeah, there's no formal process for these, what do we have for twelve here?
Yeah, and, you know, some of these committees also, um, the board member plays different roles. Some is more participative. Uh, others, others are just the board members there for informational purposes. Um, and to act kind of as just a, a, a sounding lord of the A S N. So, uh, i- i- it, I think that there were a committee that's not on this list of a group of people. You know, I think that, and, and they wanted a, a board member there that they would come to the board, or to the board president and state their case.
I think, I mean, it doesn't work around kind of a categorizing committee, making sure they fit the categories of the areas that board members, you know, are, you know, like, that are connected to the district, that are connected to the school appropriately. As we know, that that's been one of it, and to, you know, Frank Fred, about different committees, right, to be going to, a pause, for example, is more informational, kind of where you update. Where I love, it's like very much discussion and, you know, and conversation, but participating in things with, with our, our bodies.
Thank you.
I just shared the link to the, the committee. For Sheila, who I overshared.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I'll be reminded.
I need to stretch it. Yes, we do. And then just getting back to before we, uh, generate your A G, your dev outcomes.
Oh, um, silly to talk about, um, um, I can't correct. We do, I, um, yeah, there are actually, well, I sent those topics out at the board not too long ago, and so, uh, yeah, a few of those are still in the works, trying to clarity and timeline them out, but we'll do those again. It's not, it's not lost.
Anything else? Graham?
So when we got to the liberation section, we had it tonight, we asked, if we had comments regarding, uh, area support, but we skipped over the topic of employee down the path. And I know last year we decided, oh, it's okay, that's more than informational. Um, but as you read in the report, we now have seven years of wheel spin. We haven't made a dent on the gap of, uh, the ratio of, uh, students of color and teachers of color. There's a strat plan goal, we try to improve it, they're not. Last year, we're for that, we asked a couple of questions of the administration, we asked, well, what are the tactics that are working, and what are you doing differently? We asked, what are other districts doing, the rest of the? Um, this year's report doesn't include one of those questions, you know, last couple of years, that's. A question whether, do we still want to have as a strat plan goal, the increase of, uh, our teachers of color? Is that still important to have a diverse, uh, faculty? Um, if specific targets make sense? So that question, I wonder if we need to discuss in the group, because seven year running. There's been no, uh, way.
I mean, I think that's something you have, and I, honestly, if you did, I, I think it was special. Let's, let's, let's make sure we get to that. Follow process. I hope that's taken well, and that's people, folks, uh, the three in the board. Um, well, we're going to have, it's like.
Sorry, are you saying?
As, as, you know, in terms of like features and items for the process of, we'll come back to, you know, look at our work that we have to come back to us and then people discuss work fully.
Okay.
Uh, what that might be, and then decide, you know, for, at, at, at a board, what we want to.
It's now a topic in the part.
Yeah, yeah. Along with entering it, um.
Also, so we're cutting that to our board.
I think this question of, uh, faculty, uh, like a real plan. It's interesting, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, clearly it's a, it's something that needs to be discussed by the administration board, whe- whether it becomes, oh, this is now a board goal, creating some new level of capability on that goal that already exists in the strat plan? I don't know, maybe that itself we have to talk through.
Is, is, is there already explicitly mentioned this is, is, is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, regarding the strat.
Okay, okay. So, the questions.
Yeah, I mean, what we.
A question that is, in light of seven years of. Should we revisit that? If something's, literally, it's already, it's attainable, or not enough is being done, or something. So to me, it's, it's an issue, uh, and kind of view it similarly to in April, when we saw how the rate of extra regular participation, like, like, to nowhere close to where, um, other groups are. That became an issue, and I didn't want us to get for this next April, I'm going to go, you're a board, oh, okay, that's the same. So rather than just saying, huh, hope it's better next year? I'm nominating this as something, you know, we consider on the pack, it's a future board.
I think, I think that's a, I think that's a right place, where we're, we made a very discussion, and based on what we sign, like, the next, sorry. It needs to sit on a whole for others.
So, or, so I can.
No, we just should know that they go when, um, Greg and his team comes back to us, you know, but sometimes things, like, if you provide some more information and context, because we also want to make sure that what we're asking, is it, though, is it, other times, probably being done, that you can explain, like, if it's, if it's happening. So we just wanted to, we'll do, they'll do, from that and agree, um, what, what.
I think this makes year four or five, in a way, for that, uh, that, that. So, you know, the school year has now started, the fall of summer, September's a good time to bring.
That's what I was saying.
We'll bring it in September, okay?
Well, with that, to my last round, or we miss my term, and so I ultimately move to adjourn at eight forty, eight P M.
Second.
Our favors, yeah, bye, we are adjourned, thank you.